Where are the men?
Oh, I hear him, Smiley.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. Now, where's the chairman? Where's the chairman? He went looking for you.
Need to get a radioactive tracking tag on that.
I have a meeting, Michael.
Oh, chairman?
Hey, how are you?
How's the chairman, Smiley?
Good. Okay, last one, please, rise.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion's reading is open. Motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. The previous meeting's the last meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Approve number five on the agenda for cash disbursements, electronic fund transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve. Item number six is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Approve item six on the agenda for the bond seminar and/or payment for seminar requests. Questions or comments?
Just a question. Every week, there's a whole list of these every two weeks. Are they all necessary?
No, at least ninety-nine percent, yeah.
Are they mandated from anywhere?
A lot of them are mandated from the state.
Do they pick up some of the cost? Do we pick up all the cost?
Yeah, then some of the agencies, some of the cost is picked up.
Most of it's picked up most of the time.
Right.
So, but I knew.
The Jim Garner and Laura Holbrook one? So Conservation District, Lewis, Tru, Marshallburg, Chesapeake Bay Program Meeting. So they went to the meeting, but it was zero cost. So that's county, our county people? Or they were the county?
No, they're county employees. They work for the Conservation District. They're county employees.
Okay, just checking. I like the zero there, just a military.
Out of curiosity, what is the Mid-Atlantic Geospatial Transportation Users Group? Art Donato and Michael Pankowski, March 7th and 8th.
It's a G.I.S. It's the G.I.S. stuff that works, Smiley.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve. Item number seven is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Authorizing application.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item seven, adopt a resolution to authorize an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program and commit forty-four thousand as a match for said program. This is supposed to be out of Act thirteen. Questions or comments?
Forty-four thousand comes from Act thirteen?
Yes.
And then they match forty-four thousand?
No, forty-four thousand's coming from it. We're waiting for them to see how much still match. We're hoping they'll match half, so we only end up using twenty-two of them.
Can we find that out before we approve that, what they're gonna do?
No, we have to put our fires up first before they'll approve.
And this is through Northern Tier, as I understand, correct?
Uh, this is the Progress Authority.
The Progress Authority.
Right. And this is a study for housing, study for Suscano County as to study of housing and what type of housing should be put in Suscano County. And also a study for the eighty-one corridor for the possibility of the industrial parks.
So we need a study to tell us if we can get an industrial park there? We need to spend money to do it if something will come?
Well, yeah, because we need to get all the parties together. And through the studies, no way you can do that between D C E D through K O Z, through all the state agencies, water, sewer, electric.
Yeah, I'd like to know why didn't you need a study for an industrial corridor when the whole county is an industrial corridor?
Well, if it was an industrial corridor, there'd be development going on. There's no development going on.
There's no industrial development going on in our county?
Not in eighty-one corridor.
Eighty-one, eighty-one means a long eighty-one?
Yeah, I don't see any manufacturing facilities. That's the only fucking place.
Didn't allow them in, or what?
What?
You didn't allow them in, or what?
I, again.
As in, you didn't allow any industrials in there?
We didn't.
Oh, you ain't done that.
Well, nobody asked to come in? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve. Item number eight is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item eight. Show March twenty thirteen as American Red Cross Month. Questions or comments?
What does it take to get you guys to consider something for a month? Do you apply for it? Do you ask, or is somebody nominated to be?
It's the standard every year. March is usually the American Red Cross Month where they try to solicit information and also to think and gain recognition for the American Red Cross. So each year, they ask for this.
So they encourage the county employees to participate? Or the county is asking just to announce it so that the populace is?
Just announce it so the populace knows.
Perfect, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item nine. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve. Item number ten is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve item number ten by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eleven is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve item eleven by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve. Item number twelve is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item twelve. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item thirteen on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item fourteen on the agenda. Questions or comments?
Yes. What is it? I'm sending you rescinding the motion from February thirteenth.
Right, we had a motion from February thirteenth to approve thirty-five thousand Act thirteen monies to go to tree hub for the rental and utility assistance. We're rescinding that motion. If you read fifteen, then that should explain a little bit better.
Then why are you rescinding it?
Because we've added item fifteen on the agenda. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number fifteen is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Do you know what the income limits are for the utility assistance?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what the income limits?
No, sure you haven't handles up. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen.
Motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item sixteen. Questions or comments?
How long was Amanda there?
I don't know how many years she's been here. She's been there a few years.
Just a few years.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve. Item number seventeen is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item seventeen on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
What, so their job is year-round?
Yes.
Okay. And they're supposed to, what? Clear the rolls, encourage voter registration, make sure that voters that are on there aren't dead or somebody's dog's name? So what is, what do they do? Do they go through the whole thing during the year and clean it up? And then take on the new ones? And we look at them? Or is there verification? Or what is that?
Well, yeah, there's a lot that they do. I mean, doesn't say it all. The job descriptions are quite lengthy for both the voter register and also the director and the assistant. You know, they take the stuff from the last election, look at the people that didn't vote that were registered, and try and clean up those rolls. They verify the address changes. They set up for all the elections. They make sure that all the information is correct. I mean, there's a lot of stuff they do.
Do they review any voter fraud? Like if somebody thinks there was voter fraud, would they review it?
If they get any complaints from any of the voting polls, they do review it.
That's the person, great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve. Item number eighteen is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item eighteen by Matthew Brannick to the Union Jail, to the sheriff. Questions or comments?
Yeah, wow. Is this the one that we are, that we created? Or is this replacing somebody else that?
This is the created one.
We had conditions on that one.
Right.
I wonder if those conditions should be included in the motion here? Well, it was Act thirteen money. As long as it's Act thirteen money, I just don't want that to get lost in the shuffle.
Right.
So I think that should be.
Well, it's in the salary board. Well, it's in the salary board. The salary board's the one that will eliminate the position. So the salary board, in the salary board minutes or in the salary board meeting that we had, it was in the motion in the minutes that if the Act thirteen money drops below a certain level, the position's automatically eliminated.
So this should reflect for the conditions that we have previously approved?
Yeah.
So this is the?
Does that make sense? I mean, let's keep it, I just might keep it consistent.
This is the only deputy sheriff position that gives a forty hour?
Right.
A week, right?
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because they got one leaving. And I don't know where in the shuffle whether, where this one was, because it doesn't say.
We'll just add to the motion for the conditions by the salary board.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
And what is the need for another sheriff? Why do you need another sheriff?
The amount of work that they have to do, the number of hours that the current employees have for vacation time, sick time, personal time, that leaves them, plus the number of prisoners they transport, and the number of warrants that they serve. They're understaffed.
And is there an increase in crime? That this is, there's a need for this over the past five years?
Nah, I don't think so.
Has anybody done a study to see if there's been any increases?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number nineteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item nineteen by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall. Questions or comments?
How long is that position for?
It's gonna last about five weeks.
Five weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, that was one of my questions. Also, do we have a signed contract? I haven't seen it yet. Is that for an independent contractor? Do we have a signed contract for an independent contractor?
No.
Will we have one?
Yeah, we can go on. Any other questions? Yes.
What initiated doing this? I mean, I've been around here for a lot of years. This is the first time I can ever remember bringing someone in to train someone.
Well, actually, we're short-staffed in the office. We had an individual in the office that we, this is the original person that was in this office doing the job. This person retired, another individual came in, decided to go back to her old position, which vacated this position. Because of that, being so short-staffed, we needed to bring the person back to take and get all the work done, the daily work that needs to get done. Plus, this person also is the person to train the replacement, is in the best position to train a new person.
I have a question about the process, too. How do you ratify an independent contractor without having, deciding on a contract in a public meeting? It appears that this, and she's working, I understand, right now.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, how do, how did that decision get reached without public deliberation?
Well, as independent contractors, like when we bring in the independent contractors for Roto-Rooter to fix the sewers, we make a phone call and call. Any other questions?
Isn't stuff like that, that supposed to be posted on a board?
No.
No?
Any other questions?
Yeah. Twenty-three oh five an hour?
Right. It's actually less than what she was making before, because as an independent contractor, she's not getting covered with workman's comp or with benefits or pension or anything like that.
This seems high.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm good about that, because I'm also part of the process. Thank you.
Item twenty.
Motion to approve. Item number twenty is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item twenty. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve. Item number twenty-one is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve item twenty-one by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is that the position that Steve Stoudt is doing parts? Or is this gonna be a vehicle that he'll use also?
No, that's a position, that's a vehicle that's replacing the current vehicle that we have that the deputies are using.
So it's for the DUI task force?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How many vehicles in the DUI task force?
Right now, there's just that one marked vehicle. And that one's ten years old and it's getting replaced. And it's coming out of DUI task fund money, which means it's not coming from any local tax dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
I have one more here. And I'll make this motion. Motion to reappoint Commissioner Warren and to appoint Michelle Graziano, Director of Suscano County Children Youth Agency to the Lackawannock-Suscano Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program Advisory Board for the period of February twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen, through December thirty-first, twenty fifteen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I have another issue I want to break out. I've got several calls in the last, been over the last week about municipalities across the state addressing Second Amendment issues that have come up in the government. Many have not been resolutions, making motions, as symbolic as they may be, because we have no control over it. In that light, I guess I would like to make a motion that any federal law, rule, or executive order that in any way infringes upon our Second Amendment rights shall be unenforceable in Susquehanna County. It's symbolic, I mean, you know, we don't, but I think that word's gotta go out. We need to.
Are you making that motion?
I made the motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Oh, yeah. Since the document was written in the state of Pennsylvania, you know, was in Philadelphia, but, yeah, I'm totally, well, finally, when it comes up here, that I can get a hundred percent behind. Yeah, so tell the feds and let Lance know. Keep their BS in Washington, D.C. And even Pennsylvania, even if our State House passes it, we ought to, we ought to, anything that infringes, we ought to tell them to.
There are bills in Harrisburg right now to try and control so they cannot be what they're trying to do.
I abandoned California for this very reason. One of the reasons I left, because they're not very friendly to the constitution.
Yeah, it's a lot worse right across the line in New York State.
Correct.
We don't want to hear in Pennsylvania.
So I'm totally in favor of it. I hope you guys can pass it. That way, we can send a message for our small part here in the county. It would be great to do.
Any other comments on this motion?
Yes, I hope it passes unanimously.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm happy.
We're happy. All right, we're at public comment.
We'd like to take the opportunity to invite all of you to a rally in support of the Second Amendment, which will occur on the anniversary of the Battle at Lexington and Concord, which was the first attempt by the British to seize our weapons and our powder. So we're hoping that you bring that resolution with you, and all of you will attend.
Do you know when that?
We are thinking it'll be April nineteenth.
You know what happened when the British tried to take our cannons and our?
Yes, I do. And that's why your vote is so important.
All right, do you have a time and a place for the venue?
Twelve noon. Tentative twelve noon on the Green. And we have two parties probably from all over the county, all over, you know, like Cummings, Wayne, et cetera, and to New York will be there as well.
Now, what you ought to do, as long as you're doing it here, why don't you do it in all the counties? Then all the counties go to Washington. You can do it down there in Washington. Maybe they'll get the point.
The Italian word is scaro, the money.
One thing that we do need you to do, if you're gonna use the Green, I need you to take and reserve it for the date that you need it.
We will do that.
All right, so that's.
We have been, we've been in touch with Jason Legg as a speaker. We've been in touch with the sheriff. He was on board. We want to know that we can count on you to be there. And we want that resolution to be read, because these things are so important for the rest of the country, not just the county, but the country to know that we will stand and defend ourselves if we have to. And we will.
You know what happens if we don't have guns? They start taking our guns away?
I know exactly, yes. I know exactly.
Can you? You're getting it right now.
Yeah, they want to take our guns away, but they don't want to take their guns away.
You might get a wedding going on, or something.
It's the same, it's the same thing with the medical. They got better medical than we have. And we pick, where to pay these?
I know. Friday, April nineteenth.
According to the court of law, Congress.
I should put them in there for right now. We'll put you.
Or the House of Representatives is not supposed to pass a bill.
Sir, please. This isn't free for all. We will, we will put you in and reserve you for the nineteenth. If that date changes, please get a hold of us right away.
Yeah, we have, we're gonna do that immediately. We're just passing right now. I have a flyer that, you know.
We want to make sure that nothing else shows up there when you're trying to do it. All right? Okay, any other public comment?
Yeah, just, just a personal comment. That when you hire a deputy sheriff, he's making eleven bucks an hour and carries a gun and risks himself a risk. And when you hire someone who's doing training of a, do you train someone to be a clerk in twenty-three now? I just find that kind of absurd.
It is. Interesting.
Okay. Fracking and the revolving door in Pennsylvania, February twenty thirteen by the Public Accountability Initiative. Read it the week. I would recommend you guys get a copy. Here's the governors and staff, governors and staff page. Tom Ridge worked for the industry. The guy that took over when he left, took the governor. Mark Schweiker, industry now. Ed Rendell, industry and all those connections. This shows not just the governors. There's Tom Corbett and his connections. So no wonder why we can't get anything done here. Then we get to the D E P. They were founded in nineteen ninety-six, and their current form are ninety-five. There's Jim Seif, industry, original guy. Kathleen McKenty and David Heffs, all industry people. John Hanger, now has his own consulting firm, industry. Mike Crancher talks about his direct relationship. Okay, so no wonder why we can't even get him to show up when we call. I'm telling you guys, because they don't show up. We have people in this county that have called for help when they have immediate problems. And the D E P hangs up on them and will not come. They put you on the waitlist where nothing's happening, which we find ridiculous. All of this, thirty pages long, and every bit of it is former and current people that work for the state. There are at least fifty people listed in this that are in high-ranking positions in the last ten years that all work for the industry. I'm getting sick of this. I want perp walks on these people. When we find out that they use their position as a state employee to get favor with the industry by voting yes and looking the other way. Every time they, they said boo, and they, we jumped. I'm talking to governors on down. And now, all of a sudden, they've got cushy million-dollar-a-year or two-million-dollar-a-year positions with the industry. So what I asked on, when I was at Jesse White's hearing last week, I spoke, I represented the Suscano County, the only person there, on what the D E P was doing to ignore all of us. And I asked for a two-year moratorium to be passed legislatively that if you work for the state of Pennsylvania in any way, shape, or form are in an appointed or elected position, that there's a twenty-four-month wait if you want to go to work with anybody that you use to oversee or representing somebody else. I find it quite ridiculous that these people are going two or three or four times more money than they make with the state and they're using it as a stepping stone. I understand it's common practice. But on this issue, which is life or death for some people, and their whole life is ruined and their house values are in the toilet, I find that quite interesting that they get to go get million-dollar-a-year jobs while people still are stuck in this county on replacement water and nobody cares about them. So that's the dirty deal there. And I'll follow it up. Found out about a secret meeting that was happening at our high school here. I didn't bring my tax bill, but a good chunk of it went to the high school. And I have no children here going. no children here going. So I found out that Williams had a meeting, invitation only. They sent out three hundred invites. You'd like to know why they did it? Because we found out they falsely filed to the DEP when we were at the County Planning Commission. They checked Marka Box Church Compressor Station. They did not. We have people that said they were not, absolutely not communicated with, but they stated on their paperwork, it's a false filing with the state of Pennsylvania, that they did. They rammed it through here, we know that. But what they did was invite those three hundred people to a meeting. Only thirty showed up out of three hundred, ten percent. But they're going to use that, they're going to use that as a reason to say that they did it after the fact, months after the original filing, which false filing doesn't get fixed by trying to fix it that way. We find out it's a closed meeting. I called the superintendent of schools. He had no idea really what they were doing. They approved it. They said they were having a picnic. Okay? That's what Williams told them. I'm a stakeholder with Williams. I have the pipeline across my property. I showed up, so did some others. We were refused entry even though we saw no less than five people that were not on their list at the front get to go in. They said they were going to call the state police if we didn't leave. We did not leave. They told us we had to be ejected from the building, that they controlled the whole building when they're having something in one room. And I'm talking about something that happened in our county. The superintendent didn't know why they weren't holding this over at Elk Lake School. That's where this thing is. It's within a mile and a half of that. Every parent over there is a stakeholder in this, but they didn't have it there. I'm sure it was because they didn't want the problems. Our superintendent was not very happy, Mike Agnaski, to find out that they're bringing their garbage and their problems over to his school. He feels he was lied to. We went, not only were we, oh, I will. Vera was trying to get in, just like all of us were. She was physically costed by two big guys who didn't wear anything that said security. They had no uniform on, nor would they identify themselves. Now, I'll tell you what, they didn't touch me because it would have ended a lot differently, but they sure let go of her as soon as I barked. So I will not have these people come into our community and order us around, we can't be in the building, then you can walk laps in the high school. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
So just letting you know, thank you.
Next.
I just want to make a comment on, I love, governments have killed over sixty million people recently, I don't know, within the, upstate or not, even whatever. But first they confiscated their guns and then made a direct. Now, I don't know if you've heard about this thing in Brazil, but they're driving people off their land and claiming that the Indians, and this is Agenda twenty-one, but, that new Christians that are driving the warming, they're using the Indians down there, that makes sense, you know? Driving them off the land and they have no place to go. They don't know where their food's coming from. And, you know, that's just the importance of what you're saying. Our gun rights, they're, you know, very important. We have to keep them. Oh, by the way, they have no guns, so the government's, they're going to come in and run them off the land.
Let me ask you a simple question. You think there's been a Holocaust if Hitler hadn't taken all the Jews' guns away from them?
Probably not.
I'd say there's been now, you know why the Japanese didn't ever invade the American mainland? Because at the surrender, they said, you could never do that because there's a gun behind every blade of grass.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, all these foreign terrorists need to understand and realize that's what we are as Americans.
Yeah.
Don't think you're coming here and get away with what you do where they're from because it's not going to happen.
That's right. As long as we have our guns.
As long as we have our guns.
All right. Sure?
Yes, we've also been finding out that there's less inspections this year. Two thousand and twelve, there were less DEP inspections of gas sites. Two thousand and thirteen, still less. And even we have found sites, if you go on marcellusgas.org, that compiles all the information from the DEP sites, that there are a number of sites with no inspections right up to the point of production. So have you been able to talk, and are you talking to DEP again? Have you done any kind of, the past two weeks, any information from them? Could you ask them, why are we having less inspections? Because that's dangerous at this point, where the DEP is not overseeing the sites and they're leaving it to the gas companies to oversee themselves. Now, that's a very dangerous position that we are in. So is there anything you can do about that? Talk to Sandra Majors, talk to the DEP, and report back to us next time we meet?
Any other comments?
Yes, my name is Harry Masters, senior. And the roads and stuff like that there, it has to be fixed down there. West Lennox Road is really bad.
Okay.
And Route one oh six, going down the Camby corner.
Did you talk to the township?
No, I haven't.
Well, the county doesn't have any control over any roads. It's all the township.
It was a state road.
Well, then you need to call PennDOT and talk to PennDOT.
That and the wells and stuff like that, this flood, or what you want to call it, coming up, people's pipes and stuff like that there? I mean, they give them water butts, well, but how about, how about the people that don't have insurance? And they get infected and get in the hospital, and they're dying because of some of this stuff. That should be looked into.
Any other comment? Sure, last time.
Yeah, I'd like to know, too, with the impact, let's see, Act thirteen, impact money. We have more and more people that are complaining that they're having impacts from, with their health near gas sites, near compressor stations. Is there any way that you can use some of the impact money for health studies, for health assessments, and even blood and urine testing so we have baselines? We need baselines to compare, to see what's happening to us a year down the road, two years, as we get, continue to be exposed to all these toxins, the emissions, the tons of emissions from the compressor stations, and all the emissions from the gas sites. Is there anything you can do with the impact money?
No.
And why not? Can you say why not?
Because there's no allocation in the funding for that. Any other questions? One last, go ahead.
Just one real quick question. Commissioner Gene Greco, I applaud you for standing up and saying that we all have the right to carry guns and that we should protect our rights for those. My question is that the states have a long history of rescinding the rights to carry other arms that are not firearms. As such, I'm a throwing weapons person.
What kind of weapons?
I throw axes in competition almost every weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
If I have an axe on my hip and I'm walking through Susquehanna County, I'll get pulled over by a cop.
No, you won't.
I've had officers ask me why I'm throwing axes in my backyard when they can see me from the street. So my question is, should we hope that as we continue to have our rights rescinded, that people will rise up and ask that all of our rights be returned? Because clearly, the document that we all refer to saying the Second Amendment says, it says arms. It does not say firearms. So as we've watched these things get chiselled away, should we hope that it'll be, should we hope that the communities are more understanding that not everybody has the same interpretation of the word armed?
Well, you know, everybody's got a different interpretation of it. But keep in mind, the Constitution was put in place to protect us from the government. The government seems to think it's in place to protect them from us. They got it backwards. So I think we, everyone will put forth an effort to keep our rights intact as broadly as we can.
Motion to adjourn.
I have another comment.
You've had your time.
I have another comment. You shouldn't.
You've had your time, sit down.
Since when do you have limits for comments?
Sit or you'll be removed.
Since when do you have limits for comments?
All right, chef. Okay. Open salary board meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Motion one of hers. Motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Gene Greco.
I second it.
Second by Treasurer Benedict. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item four.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve item number four by Commissioner Gene Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five.
I'd like to motion to approve item number five is listed on your agenda with one change to it. It should be thirty-four five, thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
How did we get thirty-one five in there?
That's, it was the wrong number that was sent up.
Oh, okay. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Gene Greco. To approve item five. Questions or comments?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six.
I'd like to motion to approve item number six is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Gene Greco to approve item number six. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Gene Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item seven on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
What's a quality assurance officer, what do they do?
They do several things, but part of their function is to review what's going on in the, the room itself, the dispatch room itself, making sure that we're meeting the quality standards we should be, working with individuals that need a little additional training, working, also works as a dispatcher in a heavy load situation. So trying to, to make sure we're at the professional standards we should be.
I'll bring up again what Bruce mentioned earlier, which is, that's a thirteen dollar an hour position to be in an office, but it's eleven dollars an hour to be out with a badge and a gun? Come on, guys.
Okay, well, if you haven't figured it out, this is one department.
Correct.
And we're looking at one department right now, trying to fix one department. We're not stopping there. We've got to go through the courthouse. If anybody hasn't figured it out at this point, our start rates are too low. We need to address the issues inside salaries to maintain quality people in the positions. So we can't just do it across the board for every position, and once we have to start someplace.
I agree. And I like the movement, but like I said, it's, it's off kilter, so hopefully we can look at that. We want quality people, but if you get quality people sitting in an office that do something wrong, that's not a very big liability for the county. You have an eleven dollar an hour person that fires a gun at the wrong time, that means we all could have a really, really problem, so I would think we'd want to be sure they're qualified. Thank you.
I'd like to comment.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a comment that it was recommended that all department heads do a business plan for their departments and get them to us to see what's actually needed, so we're waiting for those to come in.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve item eight by Commissioner Gene Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments, Bruce?
G.I.S. code.
Basically, what has to happen is every time we get a new address or an address in the system, we have to get a G.I.S. coordinate for it and, and put it into the system. Eventually, everything is going to be controlled by G.I.S.
What does that stand for?
Geographical.
Interstitial or something.
Right, right. It's all the X and Y coordinates is the location so that they can pinpoint exactly where the location is.
That's what's on your phone, so when you put in an address, it takes you there.
Yes. I'm noticing at the bottom, this isn't directly related, but it is, every time on the bottom it says Robert Stoudt, I understand goes by Steve, Director of Public Safety. We've met him with him a couple of times, nice guy. What does the Director of Public Safety do for this county? Because we come with him with problems with safety issues related to oil and gas, and he is, he raises his hand and says there's not a damn thing he can do about it, and that's exact language. So I'm, I'm just, it's on the bottom of the last four things you've approved. I'm concerned that we have somebody who has a position who's, it says, the Director of Public Safety. I don't know what safety that they're doing, but I would like you guys to ask exactly what that entails. Because me, as a taxpayer, I see that, and we think we bring him legitimate things, and every time his hands go up like, like he's getting carted off to jail. So if you can ask and find out exactly what the Director of Public Safety is supposed to do for our direct public safety. I see it doesn't relate to truck. Truck's driving on my side of the road. I don't see it relating to giant holes in the road that I can go off, fly off the road when I hit. Doesn't relate to contamination of water, contamination of air, any of these things. That, to me, is direct public safety. I don't care about some ethereal thing that might happen in the future that he oversees because of an emergency that might happen once in a year or ten years. That does concern me, but far more concerns me is getting hit head-on, corner to corner with a forty-ton truck, and nobody seems to care about it. That is public safety. Either change, we need to figure out to change his name to whatever he's really doing, or have him be a Director of Public Safety, we can all come to for free information. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine?
I'd like to motion to approve item number nine is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Gene Greco to approve item nine. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Gene Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren to approve item ten on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
What's the reason just for adding the two and a half hours?
We want everybody to work forty hours a week.
Okay, just checking to see why it would be, that's a pretty small.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eleven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Gene Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item eleven on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to motion to approve item number twelve is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Gene Greco. Pro item four. Questions or comments? All in favor?
I'd like to motion to approve item number twelve is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Gene Greco. Pro item four. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment regards to salary board? Yes.
Yeah. Motion number, where do we start? Number six, number seven, number eight. I forgot number five. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. We all prefer the public safety. Have we been deficient in public safety? I mean, this is an awful lot of money. It's like, do we have a crisis in the public safety department?
No, we don't have a crisis in it, but what we do have is, for years, we've had people employed in there that were paid in salaries that were substandard for their positions and for their accountability. And what we're trying to do is, with the help of the department heads, is to restructure these departments so that people are getting paid an adequate wage so they'll stay here and that we won't have to keep continuing to go outside to hire outside sources to take and bail us out because we don't have the staff here to do it.
Okay.
On the last flood, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars going to an outside source because we didn't have our own people trained and up the street as to where they should be.
It's just like one after another, you know? I look at it and go.
Right. So that's one whole department that's done now. Yes.
I'd also like to add that tomorrow is the deadline to apply for half of some of those salaries through Pima and FEMA, which they, we've had to pick up the full salary and benefit package for all of them, and now the state will be picking up half depending on what their job description is and what they do.
By changing the job description, we now get fifty percent of the funding for that position.
Just one final on that. I'm glad that where the county itself is not picking up the whole, you know, the whole expense. However, I think everybody has to keep in mind that when we say they're picking it up, that still means.
It's still tax dollars, but it's taking off a bigger part.
Right. All over.
Any other public comment on the salary board?
On that note, what you just said, I agree with what you're doing. The problem is that those are all positions in the emergency management, you say FEMA and Pima, and so I find that interesting that, that's who they're, all this is approved by, we get money from them, so we're hoping that they can also get involved in the questions that we're asking because it, about what's going on around here. So that's the key is, if we're going to get money from Pima for these positions, and it's the feds and the state and the county, then I would, I'm for one, as a taxpayer, want to see more action on, on some outbound, looking at things. Used to be able to go to the Conservation Court, and they would come out and look at my creek. They can't do it anymore because it's been taken away from them. So if that's been taken away, and they're going to get money from the state and from Pima, I expect that, that office over there, now that they're well-paid, well-staffed, and ready to go, I want to see some action, or else, or else you guys can, you know, start attacking.
Any other public comment on salary board? Yes, Mr. Henry.
I had a question about the public safety. You say you've upgraded that department, you're done with that department now? That's the one department you got done?
Right.
So what'd that upgrade end up costing, an increased cost to taxpayers?
Increased cost to taxpayers?
Approximately.
Eh, I'd say maybe probably about, maybe ten, fifteen thousand at the most.
Per year.
Per year. Motion to adjourn?
These are all effective immediately, is that correct?
Right, yes. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Gene Greco.
I'll second it.
Second by Treasurer Benedict. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You get your name on there somewhere. Don't worry, I don't break that easy. I could fence for three and a half hours last night.
No.
We're good.
I guess.